Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
I'm going to call the meeting to order at 5:30. Pledge of Allegiance, Jake's to Julius, we can pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adjustments to the agenda. Chris, do you have any adjustments?
No.
Jigs, no?
No.
Okay. 6A, rather than safety and Title IX, we're going to call it security proposal. It's what we're going to cover under there tonight. And maybe budget updates, tuition or something updates under that, but at least security proposal and whatever else the superintendent wants to add. Under 7A, we're going to put slash, appoint board clerk. Under, it's number 11, we're going to adjust that to be an executive session for personnel and student matter.
11?
And...
Under 11?
Yes, and we're going to move 11 down to 12.
Ah, okay, thank you.
12 as the setting the date and 13 as the adjournment.
Still, was that personnel and the student matter, so is it two items?
Two items.
Is that under 9 on what they passed out originally? It went from 9 to 10 was director's comments?
9, 10 is director's comments. Yeah, because we do director's comments before exact meetings.
Right, yeah.
And so that's why the exact session would be number 11.
Okay.
And then we'll move 11 to 12.
Yeah, okay.
As the date and adjournment is 13.
I get you.
Anything else anyone's thinking of? Okay, if not, communications and public comment. I'm not seeing any. So review and approve board minutes for August 1st and August 29th. Are there any corrections to August 1st? Okay, the only correction is under the June 6 minutes. Andy was in attendance and we had that discussion at the meeting. He was in attendance at the June 6th. He's noted as being an executive session and he's noted as being in the beginning. It was a different meeting that he was not at. So we need to have that struck out because at the time we also discussed that he was there. And I don't know about Bill, I guess did leave early that night, so that's okay. That's the only correction, so barring any objection, I'll approve the minutes as corrected. And August 29th, any corrections? I didn't find any either, so I'll approve those minutes as they stand. All right, reports superintendent?
Yeah, so let me get one second here because my computer is being shared there, so I can't pull everything up in time domain the same way. So we just wanted to update, the big thing around safety is we got a report back from Rob Evans, which we've been going through. He hasn't given us a full written report, but he did provide us with some of his highest priority things that we need to address and look at. And so we will be doing a presentation at the SU, but we just wanted to update the rock board just because you are half of our building, so it does pertain. So the pieces that really pertain, one is more centralizing our responses at the SU level. And so making sure we have consolidated, but also universal responses to how we're looking to address some of those things, given a safety protocol or whatnot. But one of the big pieces that Rob had brought up was audio and visual capacity at all of our main entrances. And so like right now at Saxons River, they have audio because there's a little push button so you can call someone, but they don't have video. They do have direct eyesight, but they don't have, but they don't have that recording that's going on so that if there were to be some reason we needed to go back and access to look at who might have been at the door, we don't have that capacity. The same thing happened is at Central. Again, we have eyesight when someone comes to the door, we have visual eyesight who we're letting into the building, but we don't have that recording capability and video. And so what Rob had proposed and suggested is that every building have them, but you should have that centralized. And so the other piece that he talked about was we should really look into door monitor alarms if a door is propped open kind of thing, which our buildings don't have that capacity to. And so we had actually looked into this proposal last year. I'd asked Ricky to look into it last year. And so the proposal that we want to bring to the SU board would bring us the audio, video at every single main entrance. It would bring us the keyless fob at specific doors around the building. And then it would also increase our cameras within our buildings to a minimum level because some of our elementary schools are not even at a baseline. And then it would also provide the door prompts for the different doors that might be open type of thing. And so some of those might be a screamer, if you know, so it's a push button, so if you push that button and it breaks the magnetic piece, it will start to scream, so you know the door is open. Some of them might be more of an electronic piece that alerts a system somewhere that that door is open so that we can respond to it, so it would be more of a silent kind of prop open. So in looking at it, the whole proposal that we have right now is about $340,000 for the entire SU, all of our buildings. And what we, what we propose is that we know that we currently have a fund balance at the SU level. So coming to the SU board and asking the SU board to allow us to begin spending those funds now because we know that it's going to take about six months from bid to the beginning of contract work for that to happen. And so if we wait until after March and try and go through, you know, putting monies aside, that we may be into next year by the time we're getting around to doing this work. So we'd like to try and begin that work sooner than later. And that's why I was trying to pull up this Rockingham's piece of it. So instead of coming back to each board and saying, can you please put aside $30,000 or $50,000 or $80,000, we're looking to use SU, known SU fund balance now to just go ahead and start building that. So if I can get the specific number of those questions around that.
I have a security question, not necessarily dealing with rocks, but Andy, do we get a timely update on guardians or parents who have a court restraining order or something that separates them from the child for that long we would be under their care?
So typically that is handled at the building levels, but my experience as a building principal, you know, when I was a building administrator, would be you're really only going to get those when they're brought to your attention. So the court isn't sending them to you. Oftentimes what happens is a significant other might say, there's a restraining order against this person. And then we say, okay, do you have something in writing? Because that's the only thing we can go on. And so then you have to wait to get that piece in writing. And we take precautions, and I can let the principals speak to that because I know they do an excellent job of taking the precautions.
Okay, just curious.
We have to get that. So a lot of times people say, there's a restraining order, then you get went to and you find out that it's a little old, it's lapsed, or it's not really a restraining order, it's something else type of thing. So, but I don't know if there's anything you guys want to add?
I have spoken to the court itself last week actually and asked for an updated version also because there was a little typo on one of the ones that we had received. So they're relief from abuse or RFAs or something like that may be given to a family member who would bring in a copy to us. We would hold on to that and just make sure anybody who needs to know what's going on would be aware, just making sure if there's restrictions for somebody either within the building or certain proximity to different places and things, just be mindful of that and to ensure student safety, so a safety plan is made if there was somebody who can't be around or something like that, sort of monitor what's happening.
And?
No, I mean usually, I mean it's as Andy described, so we find out about it, either one of the students registers or like a parent comes in and reports something and then we ask for documentation.
Okay, thank you. So Andy, my understanding was that the SU doesn't have a fund balance, that the, if the, if the, if the funding that we've provided, you know, each of the, each of the towns have provided in this, in the, creates a, there's a surplus at the end, that surplus comes right back to the, to the towns type of thing.
So I chose, I said fund balance, but you are correct. And I guess that's why we were coming back to say, if we wait until end of year in that...
Maybe to get the actual audit for the end of 2021 or 2022, June 30th?
Correct.
June 30th, 2022, year in.
But, but no, we're talking about current dollars we have right now that according to FY '23, we actually are, we are projecting a surplus for the SU. And so our, our request is to, instead of waiting until the end of the year, to know what that surplus is.
So funding was current?
Spend those funds now.
Current money?
Yes, because, because we would be that much further behind. And so that, that was our concern.
Okay, all right.
I have a follow-up question. So what line item would this money come from in the project? When we're looking at the line items, what's been spent later on in March, I guess it is?
I would, I can't speak to that specifically. I can get the answer for you.
Yeah, it's about seven or eight blocks of funds, but that's, yeah, I think it wouldn't be in a line item, but anyway.
Chris, go ahead.
Okay, and I'm, Jim, I want to follow on your question, which was a good one. I'm in, in favor of the security upgrades. I, I think you really, what you're really talking about here is you want to expend some money that's not budgeted.
Yes.
And, and to follow on to Bill's question, which is a good one too, is you create a line that is, didn't exist before and you expend money, so you have a negative balance in that line. The SU, I guess, would need to do this. Any individual district could do it, but Andy's talking about the SU. If you're really talking about expending a fund balance, that gets more sticky. You need voter approval to assign a fund balance and you would need to, you know, have a special meeting of the electorate to do that. So I don't think that's the route you want to take, Andy. I think what you're really talking about is you anticipate that there's going to be surplus for whatever reason and you're asked, what you'd be asking the board, I guess the SU board in this case, to do is, is to expend some money that is not budgeted for this purpose. Does that all make sense to everybody?
Yeah, it does.
Yes, and I apologize, I was not using the right term.
Yeah, because any funds that are spent by the SU are technically billed back to the district boards and it comes out of that money. It's not money, there really is not any balance, there's not any extra money. It's money that we budgeted in our accounts, in our budgets, but it is not turned over to the SU until, until it's assessed to us and then it goes to the SU.
Let's not get into it, but there's...
Yeah, it's a technicality. Okay, anyway, I think we all understand.
And I apologize, I can't pull it up on my phone and I don't, if I, I might lose this whole thing, so that's why I'm trying to... So I don't know if there's any, thank you, Chris, because I appreciate the clarification and jigs and...
Yeah, I'm thinking and hearing from all of our board members that are here and that we are really in favor of, you know, doing something about our security system. So I think that's something that you can, you can certainly find out, and find out what we're, we need to do.
Yeah, thank you. So we'll have the, on Wednesday night, the actual numbers. So I apologize, I just can't recall off the top of my head what I pointed up. But what this will also do, just so everyone understands, is put our entire supervisory union on one system.
That's key.
And, and we feel that that is really, really important for continuity of, you know, providing that safety to our students.
Writing at the total $340,000, then our, our portion would be a share of that. It would not be the whole, and it would be whatever it costs for our buildings.
Correct, and so like the middle school already has some wiring, but like Saxons River doesn't have all the wiring, so there's a, it's a little bit more expensive for Saxons River as an individual building because they got to pull wires where they don't have to pull wires in other places, so. But it was, I had asked Ricky to do it back in, as I say, last year, and he already has a proposal, so I think you'll, the proposal will answer some unanswered questions here, so. The other, we talked about student and tuition, so I talked with Jim Vazina, so we haven't always had a great practice of billing back tuition students to the different districts. I mean, it's usually happened at the end of the year and we've really been trying to say, how do we do this better? And so Jim's anticipating waiting until the October 1st count and then he's going to be doing a bill back for a first quarter and then be doing some other bill backs. So students who attend Rockingham schools for various reasons, typically it's because of, it's either they're coming for sevens and eighth grade, or it might be a special ed placement, we would do a bill back for those students, so. And then vice versa, if there's any Rockingham students who are attending, I guess really Westminster schools is the only one off the top of my head, but...
Or out of, out of district placements too, possibly.
Yeah, out of district placements, so. So that'll be, you should look for something, I would say, mid-October, once we know what that is. So probably at that second October, board meeting, we can, we can, we can give an update.
Okay, sounds great. Anybody have any questions for our superintendent? Okay, if not, let's move on to principals. Carrie, you wrote that in, will it start tonight?
Good evening, everyone. So I just want to give the student numbers. So in kindergarten, we have 30 students. In first grade, we have 29 students. Second grade is 19 students. Third grade is 32 and fourth grade is 29, very total of 139 students right now. Just a reminder, we have the one second grade this year, instead of the two classes, so that's why our numbers are a little lower. So just a quick part for the first few weeks, they've gone very well. We've done a lot of social emotional work, responsive classroom training for the staff and getting students ready to go with morning meetings. We have restorative practices circles, getting to know you. It's all about routines and structures, reviewing work from last year, so we thank everybody for getting that started. The students are really adjusting and back into action. We appreciate all the positive PR for our farm-to-school work and our nature-based learning, so we're proud of our teachers and staff for this work. We partner with Food Connects and with Antioch University for that, so it's really going well and getting into the experiential learning, so that's been great. And we're looking to build our community partners. So we currently have the Rotary Club that works with our farm-to-school, but we are definitely open to anybody else that wants to partner with us, so let us know. Huge thank you to Heather Murphy Hicks for her summer work for getting the program going and she's volunteered to take on our after-school programming. So hopefully all goes well, we will have finally after-school programming beginning on Monday, the 26th. So families, if you're listening, please be on alert, we were having an all-call or all-email going out and it'll be on Facebook as well. So there'll be online registration and we'll be getting that started. There is, there are some limited spaces, so please make sure you get in soon and there will be a waiting list for anybody who's not made the cut yet. But we appreciate your patience and sorry it's taken this long, so we finally have a coordinator. We have some internal assessments that will be happening, we have math screeners, quick math screener, we've been working on benchmarking for literacy and then all the MAPS assessments will begin next week on the 27th and 28th. We began our whole school morning meetings, that's been great, so our whole staff has been able to work with the students and right now it's first to fourth grade kindergarten, so we're getting ready. But we've been able to meet in the cafeteria, this is the first time in three years where the whole school has been able to convene, do our school pledge, do our pledge of allegiance and just kind of review some special announcements, things like that. So I really thank Kelly, I mean to me Carrie Pickering and Jody Howser for getting that going for the whole school. Our committee work has started and we have the instructional leadership team, we met as an SU last week. For our central team, we have Kelly Green, Carrie Pickering, Heather Murphy Hicks and Laura Rounds, and I are on the team and really working to support the SU work. We thank Nurse Jen and Assistant Millie Berry for their support, but families, we have a lot of our colds and illnesses and all things health-related, but we do have some vision screenings and dental cleanings coming up, so be on the lookout for those announcements. Again, we're working on the nature-based learning field trips, we already had one last week, we have another one this week and next week, so we're getting those students outside and having some fun. In addition, we're partnering with the Bellas Falls Union High School, Heather Worris, Marsha Stern and students in collaboration with our gardening at high school interns and working on some time that students can come in and really do some internships at the school. And tomorrow is National IT Day, so we just want to send a quick thank you to Ricky and Andrew and Jamie for all that they do to support us. We know we couldn't be online without their help, so thank you for that. We are looking at the budgeting at the local level, so we have had some grant work, just to be aware of it, for our farm-to-school work. There is a contract coming up and so trying to take it out of our existing budget, but then also looking to see if we can add a line item for this experiential work and see if that's possible. So just planting a seed now so we can talk about it at the local level. And I just want to give a heads up, we do appreciate the families for their backpack food program that we've supported. And so part of it is associated with the food bank and then some other sponsors. So it's open to anybody, not just necessarily food insecure families, but we are able to do the box food distribution, so each week. So families have signed up for it and then other students are able to take some food home if they'd like for the weekend. This Friday, just a reminder, there's no school for professional development day, we are continuing our work with responsive classroom. And I know parents, again, it's one more day, so we appreciate your support for that, but we are excited to get the staff into the learning as well. Quick thing, on October 13th, start scheduling those haircuts, we've got picture day coming up, so if you want to have some great smiling faces and things, we'll be having that on the 13th, so Thursday, save the date. And then just a last final shout-out to Erica Frank, Bethany Corson and Hart Hurley Sterling for all the work with our food. We have a lot of great meals, the students are excited. Every day we have a hot meal, we have a salad bar and then the sun butter, so this has been great, having the salad bar option this year. Last year we had salad, but it was not the big salad bar, so they could pick and choose what they wanted, so everybody's really excited about that and we're back in action. Any questions or comments?
Any questions? Bill?
I'm just curious, very briefly, Carrie, how does the dental cleaning work?
So we actually have a hygienist that comes into the school and they have a chair and so they hook it up to a sink, a faucet, and they're able to do some brief cleanings in the, in the school. We found the space, it's not as ideal as it'd like to be, it's sort of a closet, but they're able to, the families can sign up for it and they go down for about a 20, 30-minute visit and they, you know, just briefly leave class and they're able to sign up for it, so it's great.
Is this once a year?
Oh, usually once or twice a year.
Once or twice a year?
We're able to get more students in to get their cleaning, so it's fabulous.
That's good. Thank you.
What if a parent has no online, you were talking about online?
Yes.
How do they get to sign up for like the after-school program or the dental program or any of those?
So the plan will be that Heather Murphy Hicks will also have some paper copies, so if anybody needs access to that, we'll make sure. Many of them we know are, it's a really big need to, have already reached out to us, so we're in contact with them to make sure that they have access to it too, so be aware. It isn't childcare, but we are aware that there are needs for families for childcare situations, so it is programmatic for, you know, the students' needs, but we are aware that staff families really need to make sure that they have an access for their students every day after school. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for all the information. Laura?
Sure, hello everyone. Our enrollment is at 77. In our kindergarten, we have 15, first grade 14, second grade 17, third grade 15 and fourth grade 16. This year, our theme is wings and the possibilities are truly endless and definitely tie into our new eagle mascot who will be named in the coming weeks. And I know Mr. P, our art teacher, is currently working with students to create an all-school watercolor project when they're developing parts of the wings that will take shape.
Is that W-I-N-G?
Yes. Thank you. Carrie mentioned that beginning of the year assessments are underway. Our MAP assessment is scheduled for the week of September 26th and as you know, the assessment data is very, very important as it drives our instruction, as well as lets us know if we need to do further assessments so that we are targeting the right skills when we work with students. We continue to teach, model and practice expectations and students are doing an excellent job with what the expectations look and sound like. And students have also created hopes and dreams clouds, which is part of responsive classroom practices and those are all posted in classrooms. We too have our all-school meetings up and running and I've been facilitating those until classrooms eventually take over, but the first few are always focused on safety under the responsive classroom umbrella. And so we have been focused on our safety drills and modeling what those look and sound like so that when we do a drill, students know what to expect. And we model for them and they get to notice what we're doing and so that they can do that in turn when we do have a drill. Our after-school program is up and running and we have about 20 students enrolled in this session, so that's great news. I've also put out an engagement survey to our families to learn about what types of things they're interested in learning more about, like whether it's our curriculum or assessments, how to monitor their child's progress, how to work with educators to improve academic achievement, et cetera, as well as to find out from them what times of day work best for them to meet. As Carrie mentioned, our school-based instructional leadership teams are up and running and we have our first meeting tomorrow, which followed our introduction at last, our last ATM last Wednesday. And I'm super excited about the work and especially about its future outcomes. As Carrie mentioned, we do have a number of illnesses in our building, not all COVID-related, there seems to be a respiratory illness going around, but, but that is, had an impact a little bit on teaching and learning as well. As far as upcoming things, Carrie mentioned responsive classroom professional development this Friday. We have our picture day on October 6th and we have our first residency coming up last spring, I don't know if you recall, but we had the New Hampshire Institute of Dance come for one day, a one-day workshop, which was phenomenal. And we asked them to come back at that time for a residency, a whole week residency. And I've heard that their residencies are super engaging and fun and it'll be great to involve families as well.
That's good. Any questions?
Just a general question, do we, do we send home a school, a parent handbook with each student, a paper one?
I don't think so, the paper one, I put it in the... I put it in the, it's on our website and I put it out to families that if they'd like a paper one, we'll certainly copy it. I just, we just don't want to be mindful about paper. And we get few requests for that, but not many.
Okay.
Yeah. And just to follow up, Carrie had mentioned the dental and vision. And I think that happens across the SU, so, which is wonderful. Like the Lions Club comes into each building and dental queens as well.
Chris, you have a question?
Just a comment, and maybe I just didn't know about it, but I'm thrilled to hear that there's an after-school program at Saxons River now. And that really was an equity issue for kids across the district. So kudos to you for getting that up and running.
Well, not me, but...
Take credit where credit's due.
Whoever.
It is wonderful. And Tina White has been our site coordinator. This will be her first full year. She took over half-year. So she is back with us and she's been really instrumental in the work, as has Sarah Doran, so appreciate them both.
That's great.
Okay. Thank you so much. Susan?
Well, the great thing about being last is they've covered all the big stuff that's very similar, but it's been a fun and busy start to the school year. Our students are enjoying their new teachers and are excited to be back together. Our girls' field hockey team won the very first game last Friday against Springfield, so that was exciting. We too are preparing for MAPS testing on October 5th and 6th. Our responsive classroom practices are beginning with all-school assemblies on every Friday. Our instructional leadership team, school team, had its first meeting today and we're in the process of pulling together our after-school program. We finally have all of our teaching positions filled. You'll be taking action on David Chesley a little bit later. He will be our long-term health sub. And Jonathan Longard is our eighth-grade virtual math teacher. And Kirsten Larson is stepping out of her role as fifth and sixth-grade Title I math to fill the fifth-grade math-science long-term substitute position. Last Friday, we celebrated the opening of school, as we do each year, with having Kona ice. It was a warm sunny day to enjoy shaved ice. And I'm sure Jigs heard lots of Hawaiian music and saw kids outside eating flavored ice. Our current enrollment is grade five, 57; grade six, 49; grade seven, 68; grade eight, 69, for a total of 243 students, which is the same that we had last month. Thank you.
Any questions for Susan?
Just good news on the positions being filled. Thank you. A lot of schools can't say that.
Okay, thank you so much, Susan. Let's move on to WNESU update. Chris, did you have anything you wanted to tell us on the WNESU update?
I didn't have anything, but maybe you and Jim remember something that needs to be said.
The audit was finished, basically, the finance audit. And we talked about...
The audit?
For the, for the SU.
You mentioned that you haven't received it yet, but Jim Vazina did mention that it is complete.
At the SU?
The entire thing is complete.
That is my recollection, yes.
Yeah, and I have it in my...
We haven't gotten the final draft.
Okay. I know they were here and they did their work and usually that's a good sign.
This is the SU audit.
Yeah, I know, I know.
It'll take them quite a bit of time to, to, for them to generate the...
And we talked about the glitch with the pay that was handled as quickly as I think. You know, they could with some of the glitches, but... And the business office is working on improving that system, so I'm expecting that to go better in the future. And I think that was about all that we did that night. They approved a Title I teacher and increased our, and voted on the bid for federal recommendations. The bid amount was $40,000 that we approved. Okay? Committee updates, policy. The policy committee met on the 14th of September. We worked on and approved the proficiency-based graduation requirements, grade advancement retention, and animal dissection policies that will be posted and sent out to board members. They have to be posted for 10 days before they can be voted on by any of the boards. The next meeting will be the 28th of September. Buildings and grounds? Is that... Chris, is that you or is that Jigs?
No, that's Jim.
I'll figure it. The, we, the, the WNESU Building and Grounds Committee began a tour of all facilities. And we, we went to four, four buildings. It was a long afternoon. Grafton, Saxons River, the middle school, and then the high school. And we, we developed a list of follow-up questions to, it'll go out to each of the principals to get some more specific information. But it was, it was very, very interesting. Again, as I said in an earlier meeting, very pleased with, with how our two buildings, the ones that the WNESU committee viewed, how are the physical appearance of our buildings. And now, of course, we're in session, so contrary to when our board went on its little tour, the halls are fairly clinking. But Grafton, interesting, small building. And only 37 students this year at the Grafton School. That, interestingly, that, that building is home by the town of Grafton. So it's not a, it's not a school board building, so that represents...
We have a long-term lease.
Long-term lease, yeah.
Forty-seven...
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure it's as long as you want.
Well, we had, we had to deal with this with the federal funds because it wasn't, we didn't have the, what the federal government wanted for a long-term investment in that building. So, but that's been taken care of.
Yes. And then, I'm sorry, and then finally...
Sorry, Jim.
Oh, Jim. Finally, we, we went to the high school and I must admit, I did serve on that board. This was the first time I'd ever gone through every corner of that building. And I must say, I, as a, as a resident, not a parent, but as a board member, was very concerned in general about the, about the high school condition. And the, and I don't mean, I don't mean the, the fact that we don't have walls. I think that the, that's not the issue at all that I'm talking about. The issue is just how it presents itself. The other three buildings just presented themselves in a way you would want a school building to present itself. So anyway, I'm sure the, this will be discussed in more detail with the, with the WNESU board. But anyway, it was a very, very helpful and the principals who are there designated were very, very helpful for us. We're going to schedule the other buildings, Central, Westminster, the SU, and, and the West West building. And I don't have a, I don't have that scheduled at this, at this point.
I'm meeting with Molly tomorrow, so we should have that settled.
Okay.
Chris, can we ask a question?
Chris?
Well, a question for Jim, but I have a comment. And first, the comment is, you should all be aware that, as far as I know, the town of Rockingham actually owns the property that the Saxons River School is on. The school district, I do not believe, owns the actual property. I mean, thinking about the future.
Chris, say that again. That we own the property but not the building?
No, we own the building.
We own the building but not the property.
My head, and I, of course, was there during the renovation many, many years ago. It is my understanding that the town owns the property that the Saxons River School sits on. Obviously, you can confirm that or not by talking at the town hall and looking at the ownership. And so, Jim, I, I just had a question for you. You talked about, you were concerned about how the high school sort of presented itself as a building. Can you elaborate that on that a little bit?
Well, I think part, you know, dark, gloomy. Some of the areas were, just didn't look like they'd been kept up that well. Others did. I mean, the playing fields, the gymnasium, the cafeteria area looked fine, but it's just, just to give you a different feel. Now, that wasn't our purpose. Our purpose was basically looking at space in all, in all of the buildings. But I couldn't help but comment on that.
Yeah, I think the problem was that when they put in the LED lighting, it made it not as bright as what it was previously. And if you're used to coming into a bright area, when you come in, the lighting did not seem as bright to people coming into it. And I think that was basically what people were noticing for the most part. Because the bulletin boards, and maybe it was really early, so a lot of the bulletin boards were done, but there's still some bulletin boards that could, could be done to improve the appearance and lighten it up by using some lighter colors and some, maybe some lighter backgrounds that would help with some of that. But, you know, I think that's, a lot of it's the lighting. And I don't know how they improve that with, with the current, going to the LEDs, but, but we can look at that.
Well, obviously, it's not our building, so, but we do pay a substantial amount of the taxes for it. But, and I, I agree that that LED, LED lighting that was put in really was a bit dim and dark in the entire area. I agree with Jim that, I've been, of course, in the building dozens, if not hundreds of times during, while classes are going. And the lack of walls does not concern me there. It's actually a pretty quiet, studious place and just kind of a low buzz. But the lights, and this goes back to how the state revised their lighting standards a few years ago, and it was during the time I was superintendent. And what they said was, well, the schools are way too bright. You know, kids, it doesn't need to be so dark. So they actually, you know, reduced the amount of lighting that was required in school buildings. And, but I agree with all, all of you that I, the high school maybe went a little too far in that regard.
It's something for them to look at.
Yeah.
Okay, any other comments on building and grounds? Jigs?
No.
Okay. Esser's next. There were basically no new project concepts that were approved and we're still waiting on the project approval for the kitchen at C.E.'s house because of needing more than one bid and we only got one bid. So we have to have a waiver. Okay? I think that's all I have for Esser. Resignation and appointments. Megan Applegate has sent in her resignation. We gave her time to decide if she wanted to just step back for a little bit and then start up again. And she's given the indication of wanting to do that. So we need a motion to accept her resignation.
So...
Oh, I'll second, oh, no, we don't need to second.
Okay, so Chris? All right, is everybody in approval?
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, yes. And as a, aside from that, we also need to appoint a clerk in her place. And I'm, is, if everybody's in agreement, I would like to appoint Bill as our clerk because the rest of us are on the WNESU board as well and that would give Bill another position. So it seems like a more equitable way to go. Is that okay with everybody?
I didn't see that in the agenda.
I think it's wonderful.
We all think it's a great idea, so do you accept that, Bill?
Yeah, I'm outvoted, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome.
We appreciate that.
Priscilla?
Priscilla.
Yes.
If I could just ask, how would the board like me to go about?
Okay. We would like for them, anybody that's interested in the now that open board position should send a letter to the board stating why they want to be on the board, what makes them a good candidate, and the reasons the board should appoint them to the open position. Just a really short thing.
Does this need to be posted anywhere? Do we need to post it anywhere? I just want to make sure we cover all our bases. It's my first rodeo with this one.
What we've done in the past is, that's, that's what we've done when we've had open positions in the last couple of years here, so...
And just announce it?
If it's, they can send that to, to Bill and me as clerk and chair.
But we, but I don't need to have it posted in paper or anything like that? That's what I'm asking.
That's up to the board. Would the board like it posted as well? Sometimes it is. We have not posted it in the last two years, but it's up to the board. Bill?
Do we have, oh, good.
Perhaps in the shotler.
Do we have a board at the schools? I'm sure we have a bulletin board or something like that. I don't know if it...
I mean, we could definitely insert it in...
I don't think this is required.
Weekly newsletters that go home. That's why I'm just asking. We can insert it in weekly newsletters, but I also know Chris has his hand up.
Yeah. Chris?
Right, so whether you need to put it in the paper or not, I think it's fine if you want to. I don't really have an opinion about that, but... So just for the board members' information, so what we need to do is set a, you know, it'll be an agenda item at a future meeting, and pretty soon, we hope. And so anyone who is interested in that, and I know there is one person who's given a letter, and is that right, Andy? You have somebody.
I have an email, but I would, I told that person once I had more information, so I will send them what you're specifically looking for.
But, you know, if there are actually more than one person that wants to be the replacement, then the board has to kind of hear them out and make a decision and have a vote about who that is in that rare instance when that might happen. But we can always hope. So, yeah, there is a process and you have to be really clear about it. You have to be clear about, you know, at what meeting will this, you know, vote or decision of the board take place? And that's really all. I just wanted to help out a little bit with that.
Our next, our next meeting is a budget, is just a budget. It's going to be a budget discussion, just getting ready for budget. It's basically the Budget Committee. So our next real, real board meeting will be the 17th of October.
Yeah, that's great. That gives people plenty of time to think about it.
If Susan Small here is listening in or something, she'll write it in the paper.
It's, I think, I think that it's, we're putting out in newsletters and we're putting out, I think there's, you know, it's... I think there's, you know, it's, it's on that TV, I think, I think we're probably okay.
The one, one thing I wanted to add is, in terms of, yes, an email is fine, but if people want to use the US mail, they should be mailing that to the superintendent, to the Rockingham Board in care of the superintendent of schools. Andy, what's the address for that?
5111 US Route 5 Westminster Station, 034, gee, there's a lot of.
It has to be 05.
05 or something, 05.
I don't know, let me.
Westminster Station.
We have a snap quiz on this, right?
I'm getting it.
That might be one.
It goes not on the website.
510.
Well, they can get it, anyway, they can get the address off the website. That's who they should actually mail it to, is the superintendent of schools.
05158?
59.
Sounds right.
59.
59.
Yeah, the school board, it's the Rockingham School Board, care of the superintendent at the, 551 US 5 Westminster Station.
05159.
05159. Okay, thank you. So we're all set with that, right? Okay, and I think the long-term sub for help, since we're going to have an executive session, we'll put that, move that into executive session, since it's a personnel issue. Unfinished business for discussion and action, student progress. We put that on there because we are wanting to have updates on assessments in those areas. But we felt that the next meeting was a better time to do the next update on assessments because you're doing your assessments at this point in the schools. And so next time, hopefully, we'll have even better information than what we would have this time. Is there?
Yeah, the, the, I requested this, I have the, we had a presentation at our last meeting from Deb, I'm sorry, I forgot her name. Which was a very nice presentation, but what we had asked for was the results, just to see the results of the spring, you know, is it MAP test that applies?
Are you talking about state? The state test for the, yes, we, we do MAPS testing three times a year, and then we do S pack in the spring, which is the state assessment.
That's the one, the S pack. I wanted to see.
I haven't seen those results.
Oh, you haven't seen them? Okay, so the, the S pack or not, so the, but the MAP results for the spring, her bill?
Yeah, that's, she presented at the SU level, yes. But, I mean, we, we'll take some time to pull out the Rockingham data. But we, because right now it's, it's more by individual students, we have to compile if we can, if we have individual student data.
It doesn't come in by school.
It, it does come in by school, yes.
Okay, because I think the school by school would be perfectly acceptable.
Yeah, yeah, the general for, for each grade level, how they're progressing and doing that is what, is what I think.
I guess, I guess my personal concern over that is that in some of our schools, we only have one grade, one classroom. So it could potentially identify some pieces. So that's, that's what I'm, I'm just.
Ours is unusual, so the elementary, if you're doing, if you're doing a kindergarten class level for our Rockingham schools, a first grade for our Rockingham schools, second.
And it doesn't come that way, so you've got to compile it. And so that's where the challenge is a little bit, but we can get, well, I can get that for the afternoon.
Okay.
That gives us more, you know, more.
And I think whenever these results are, are available, are ready, I, I think we'd like to see them.
Yeah, sure.
Because obviously we're, we all know about COVID and the ravages of COVID and this and that. So, but the, obviously what we're, what we're going to hope to see is a, is an improving trend. And not so much what it, what it used to be or what it was, but, you know, what, are we on, are we getting back on track and, and watching a trend? So that, that's, that's what would be helpful, because that's, that's, you know, I figure, you know, we, we serve on the board, okay? And so what, what's our role? Well, we want to, first and foremost, we want to provide a successful education experience for our kids. I mean, that's why we're here. So if someone says, well, how are you doing? Then as a board member, I, I feel I need to have information as to how we're doing. And so that's, that's kind of job one, number one, and so.
No, I, I, I don't disagree. I think, I think, just so the board is aware, I believe in 20, there was no assessment. S pack assessment? Because that was a lockdown.
March, the spring of 20.
So S pack, so I get S pack, so S pack.
I don't think it was.
So it started in 21 again.
So.
Yes, yeah.
Chris has his hand up.
Chris, did you have your hand up again?
I did, and I agree with Jim wholeheartedly here. It is absolutely our responsibility to be looking at student assessment results. And statutorily, it is the superintendent's responsibility to report to the board on all relevant student results, specifically the, the S pack testing. But any local testing can be reported on as well. And I urge the superintendent to be proactive in this regard. There is, the, you know, the line about confidentiality has to do with the number of students that are being reported. So I, I believe the, the number was 10 or 11. If you have a class that's smaller than that, then you don't report those results. So there's no reason why these results should not be given to us. And it's up to the principals and the superintendent, and it's, it's the state law to be reporting to the board on these results, not just academic areas, but social, emotional, any kinds of assessments that you're using that would be useful to us, you know, in terms of making decisions, are required by law to be reported.
Yeah, you're right, Chris. Do we do adaptive functioning too? On our students, or is it just individual, just on individual?
We have, we have final surveys that.
Okay, so if you're social, emotional, and that's something that, that with COVID, we certainly should be looking at is the social, emotional piece, because it's, that was one thing that, that COVID hit us so hard on, and that, and the academics, of course, which we know that virtual learning justice can, could not be replacing our one-on-one. And we saw that over and over and over, so, yes. So having that. And I think we were going to put that, we felt that we would have that by the October 17th meeting, so that we could be really looking into that and have a really detailed report. Okay, I'm going to move on to crosswalk update. That's the one by Central School.
So that, I did add to my report afterwards, I realized that I was going to address it in here. So Peter Laurie, our PE teacher, has taken all of our classes and worked with Jane Stewie or something, and also Alexa Phelps, our counselor, to take all of the students out to do an individual class training to make sure, so if you haven't seen, if it's the big yellow crosswalk signs, you go up there, you access it with the press bar, it illuminates it right away, and then obviously it's up to the drivers hopefully to be responding. But they did a whole big training about how to look left, look right, look left, walked across the school. Our next step is to just record another video and then air that out, just to make sure people who are not familiar with it can familiarize themselves with it. But all the students have been trained on how to use it, how to cross safely, because it is on the north side of Atkinson. And making sure, we're having students leave Central, cross on our crosswalk, and then walk up School Street Extension to Atkinson. And so then they are crossing on the north side of Atkinson over to the other side of School Street. And then making sure if they have to cross again, they're walking across on the middle school side. There is a little bit less traffic over there than on our side, but it's, it's not with a crossing guard, so that's something that we've made sure that everybody's aware of. Ideally, they have as many adults working with them and to make sure that they're ready to go. We've been monitoring for, you know, compliance, obviously just a quick, just visuals, most of the people are stopping. It is a pretty bright yellow arrow kind of that points down to the crosswalk, so it does make it a little more visible to the people calling out to the stop signs. Obviously, we'll work with the Bell's Falls Police Department and just make sure that they, the drivers are compliant. But, you know, at least we've done the training to make sure that the students are aware of how to cross safely and, you know, access that area for the crosswalk, so.
All right, Susan, do you, are you doing anything for your students to learn how to use this crossway, because you have yours coming down?
Right, so, we're in the process of having a group of students in our student council leadership put together a video on how to properly use the crosswalk.
We're also looking into the cost, but also just can we get some kind of stanchions that go in the road, like kind of in the double yellows? Not a whole series of them, kind of, as you talked about, but at least one that sits in the middle that has the crosswalk figure. So again, just more visuals of what can we provide? There are usually things that are weighted, so they're not adhered to the roadway, but then like in the wintertime, they have to come up. So we're looking, can we get them? Can we get them up now so that, just train drivers? So, but just more things to just make people aware, so.
Well, because that's a state route, so we could, we potentially have a lot of different drivers going through that at various times too, so it's, it's really a, really important issue. Going back to Susan's, do you make sure that your students are using the north side when they leave your building?
They go down the south.
That's what I'm saying, that, this, this one. So that's, that's a good plus factor too. You can't control them once they get halfway down the block, but at least you're starting out in the, in the right, right situation. Okay, Andy, did you have something else you?
That was a, that was a discussion.
Any other questions on that? Okay, new business. Air conditioning, that was basically on there after our buildings and grounds visit, I believe, and.
I was, I asked to have this on the agenda. The, I was, I was surprised when we hit the fourth floor of this building to see a standalone unit, air conditioning unit in each room, I think it was in each room, certainly in the classrooms. And the, there was a pipe or flexible conduit that went up to the ceiling. And I think they took a square out of the ceiling or something.
I think it ties into.
The vent system.
The vent system. So it, like the vent right here?
Yeah.
Like, so it ties into one of these vents? So it's, it's circulating through this, it's, it's.
It's not going up into the?
Just, no, it's not just going into the ceiling, but it's going into our ductwork and then exhausting through the ceiling, through the roof, sorry, through the roof.
It's, it's not just going up into the void?
No, 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 it's into the ductwork that, that.
Because obviously.
That exits the building.
Mole is a, is a very serious issue. We, we, as, as I think Laura knows, at Saxon River, it, it doesn't take much to, to affect the mole thing. But, so I'm delighted to hear that it's vented into the venting system so that the, so that hopefully we aren't going to create a mole system. But my question was, the, we didn't hear, the board, we didn't hear anything about this. I heard somebody say that, it must have been you, Susan, that it was, it costs $18,000 to have these units for the month of September.
Correct.
And so I know we certainly didn't budget $18,000. We didn't, nobody came to us and, and asked us to authorize the expenditure. So I'm curious as to how the decision was made, who's paying for it, et cetera. I don't know where the board.
Because that's, that's kind of a large budget item.
$18,000, yeah, for a one-month shot.
I think it's, I think if anything over $10,000 is supposed to be approved, so.
Well, and, and all, yeah, but, but that's right. So let's start with that.
My understanding is, in the past, the, it was, I, I don't, I, I don't know how it was approved. I don't know how it was proven in the past, because this is not the first year it's been done. So I, I can't speak to that. I, I didn't know the price tag of the full cost when I, when it was requested, but I know that Sue had asked Rick Schuman to look into it. The system that is in place is a system they've used in the past.
When was that planned? Because several years ago, we didn't have any air conditioning, I know.
It was here, my understanding is that they were using air conditioners when the former principal was here, not, maybe not during COVID. I, I don't really know. All I know is that the information that came to me was that air conditioners had been used on that fourth floor for obvious reasons. And I asked Rick, because last spring it was, was horrible up there. I asked Rick to check into the cost. He came back with a figure, and he said this is an increase over what it used to be. But he said if they downsized, I believe if they downsized the units, got a smaller unit, that it would be less. And we went with 12 units total for the entire building. And so I reached out to Jim Vizina, and even though it wasn't a specific line item in the budget, I asked if there was enough money to cover that. And he said yes. And so I asked Rick to move forward with it. Because it had been some.
So these are rented?
Yes, they're rented, we don't own them. And so Rick, Rick reached out to the company he had used in the past, and they delivered them, and he owned them all up.
And they're just rented for this month?
That's correct.
So we have some time to figure out what we want, want to do for.
Spring.
For spring. That might be the best thing at this point, to look at other options and have some discussion at our budget meetings and what's coming up.
Because I, my, my recollection is when it was looked into for mini splits, because that was discussed at one point, and I'll, I don't know if that was back still when it was, when I was the director, I, I, I know Chris Pratt was here because we were talking about mini splits. So I was, but I'm the director. But the building, you could not retrofit this building for mini splits was one of the problems of doing it, so. But I think that's part of one of the, the long-term Esser plans, you know, can this building be air conditioned and what would that cost be?
Well, I know when we, when we did the renovation of the building, it was just cost prohibitive to, to consider air conditioning, other than the, the offices for the principal and secretary, because they're here year-round. But I think, you know, clearly the, you know, I, I don't know how many, you know, I, there's 30 days in September, and, you know, I know that we won't be using air conditioning for this week. The, you know, it's, now I'm sure, I'm sure, I know there was a couple of days in September when it was hot. But I think that, I think, I think we got to have a discussion about this in terms of what we're going to do about this. Obviously, you're off the hook a little bit if, if this was done in the past. I, like I said, it wasn't done when I was on the Rockingham School Board, so it's been fairly new. Like I said, it wasn't done when I was on the school board, so it's been fairly new. Pressola must have...
It was never brought to the board, Jim. It was done during COVID, I'm sure, when we weren't in there, but I do not remember it coming to the board at all.
So I think, you know, I think we've got, this is something we've got to discuss. Like I say, I think, you know, when you, when you look at the cost and you look at how many days this is actually making things comfortable, it's pretty frivolous, I think.
I think they may be able to find a better, better, less expensive way of doing it. And we'll look back and figure it out and have some discussion. And if we find we can't, then this is what we have to do, then we'll know. But at least we'll have had the discussion.
Do more study of it, I'm sure. I think that, I think the other message is that, you know, certainly we expect principals to have all kinds of experience. And we know that principals come and go. And I think it's important, if you're going to spend money, you know, Jim is new, too. You've got a board who's char, the other responsibility that we have, that I feel we have, other than the education of our kids, is the fiscal responsibility to our taxpayers. And so I think, I think on large expenditures, particularly of this kind of nature, we want to hear from them.
Thank you, Jim. Do we have air conditioning at Central at all? No, right? And at Saxon's River, none at all, right? That's what I thought. Chris, did you have a hand up?
Just wanted to go back to clarify a bit. So twelve units were rented for the building. One month, and it cost eighteen thousand dollars, was that?
Yes.
That doesn't include the electricity, I'm sure.
But those were the figures, right?
Yes.
Those were the...
How about rent to buy?
They weren't bought, they were rented.
No, but rent to buy, like they do for furniture.
Yeah.
It's not a lot of money.
Yes. So anyway, we'll have some discussions as to maybe what else we can do in place of that so as to keep our students at least comfortable. And we'll figure that out. We have now, it's done for September and we're not having it again until spring, so we've got some time to work on that.
And we've got a budget session coming, so we can talk about it in terms of that.
Right.
Right. Okay, the next item on here was dumpsters. The dumpsters is on here because the issue came out back of Central School when there was a refrigerator that was out there and there was some metal that was out there that was dangerous, that somebody could get really, really hurt. If they got cut bleeding, they could bleed to death. If they got in the refrigerator, a really small child, and got in there and walked in, they could die from that. So it was a real concern to me. It really scared me when I saw this out there. The emergency part of it was taken care of when that stuff has been removed. However, we're looking at the same thing happening at any of our schools if somebody dumps something. And so that's one reason it's on here. We, it may come from somebody in the school that puts something out, but it can also come from a community member, which it shouldn't come from a community member, but it can, can just dump it off at one of our sites. The other issue out there was the smart boards. There's a whole bunch of smart boards that were being replaced and upgraded in our system. And so at all of our schools, all three of our schools, the high, the middle school, the Central School and Saxon's River, those were out there. Susan, have your smart boards gone? Because they were out there at the end of last week, I know.
I didn't, I didn't happen to notice when I drove in this morning. I can certainly check.
So if they are still out there, that needs to be taken care of. And I don't know about Saxon's River either. I didn't recheck Saxon's River. I do know that Central's have disappeared. What happened was the dangerous items were gone on the Friday of the week school was opening. And then the next Tuesday, they brought in a big loading van, a carton crate or whatever, and loaded the rest of the stuff in it, so it did disappear. But it is something that we've got to have people checking. Either our janitors checking, our building people checking. And if there is something dangerous, they have to be able, they have to be told immediately to take care of it, rather than, you know, somebody giving an excuse of, well, it's not going to happen right away. That's what concerned me, was when I got a response back and it was shared with me that someone said, well, you know, you have to trust the process and it's not going to happen right away. When it's dangerous, it has to happen right away. So I think the board needs to be aware of it. And as a board, we need to be sure that we push back on it has to be any dangerous item immediately.
Now, with smart boards, that's something you can turn in a transfer station, isn't it?
I thought so, but I asked Andy to check.
It's not the electronic waste. There's like a small little card that's about, like, literally the size of a, you know, an old postcard kind of thing. So it doesn't qualify for it.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so it's just toss them in the dumpster and go. I, you know, I do know that typically custodian, like, when you're trying to get rid of, like, say, scrap metal and stuff like that, that when you call a guy up, they're only going to come out when there's a certain amount, because it's not cost effective for them to come out on a quick basis. And so I don't know if that was part of what was going on, which is like, you know, if you've got one item and you can't fit it in your dumpster, but you know you're going to have a couple more things. You try and, you know, you call up your scrap guy and he's going to come around on Friday or whatever day it is. And so you're going to start to, you know, accumulate stuff for that day when he's going to come and take it all. Because they're not going to come, for one thing, it's just, because they get paid by the ton when they go in, so. But we will definitely take note of that and work with the custodians. I know Chris has a...
Okay, Chris?
Yeah, two, well, a couple of things. I'm glad that the administration is dealing with the waste. Secondly, when this came up, I took a look at this and this, these dumpsters are not in an area where children are ever at during the school day, at any of the schools. So I'm a little concerned, Phyllis, that you have created a concern here where it, this is, the dumpsters have to be somewhere and, yes, stuff should be disposed of. And then there is a third level here, which is my concern about your actions. When you seem to be going around to the schools and acting as though you have the authority of the school board and talking to people, raising concerns, calling emergency meetings, and you don't. The policy is very clear, you have no authority, nor do I, except for right here, right now, at this meeting. And this is yet another case of you being here, there, and everywhere at school events, but acting as though you have some authority with the school board. And last time you read policy, I think it was intended for Jim McCullough. Yeah, you, it could have been me, too, Jim. But anyway, that was kind of a little lecture. And perhaps you need to have the policy read to you about what your role is as a school board member, because I think this just needs to stop.
Chris, I'll let you finish in just a minute, but before you do, calling an emergency meeting is the responsibility of the board chair. And if there is a dangerous item, as I was, I saw when I went to open house, because board members are invited to open house, and I saw the dangerous item. The dangerous item was still there. I alerted the superintendent, because that's his job, not mine. The item was still there three days later. It was a concern. And they had open access to both streets from the school. If a child, whether it's during school time or after school hours, if a child got in there and got hurt, or a person got in there and got hurt, we are liable. So, no, I don't have authority to tell the superintendent to do anything. So therefore, I had to call an emergency meeting, because the school board here, we are the ones that have the authority, all of us together. I did not have the authority, you're right, and I recognize that. And that's why I asked for an emergency meeting. Since it was taken care of, it was no longer an emergency. So I put it on the regular agenda for a discussion. It is crucial to our community. I do not want us to end up in lawsuits because somebody got hurt. And I did look, after seeing that, to see whether the other schools were. I did one quick visit to see what kind of stuff was in there, as any community member would, so that I could comment on it tonight at a board meeting. That's all I did, Chris.
Well, that's very...
I do have authority to do that.
Well, I wish you wouldn't cut me off.
I'm letting you finish now. Anything else you want to say?
You have violated this numerous times. And administrators and staff are concerned about the fact that you are in the buildings, not just about this, but for many items and acting as though you have authority of the board, and you do not. And I will end my comment right there.
I have only been in the buildings for open houses. I've been there for buildings and grounds visits.
You don't have to defend yourself.
And I leave stuff, if I want to deliver stuff, I leave it at the doors. I do not interrupt. However, our policy, if you will read policy, is that board members should be visiting the schools on a regular basis and should be in there. And I can find that policy for you, and I will find it for you and make a copy for you, because that is what is encouraged of board members, so that we will know what is going on in the school. I encourage all of the board members to visit, because that is part of our responsibility.
You are correct, that there is a policy that encourages school board members to be knowledgeable about the schools. What it does not allow is that school board members attend, contact administrators, staff members, or visit the buildings without a plan, without telling them what's going to happen. And that's what you're doing, and frankly, you should read the policies, because it really needs to stop.
Thank you for your opinion, Chris. Like I said, the only time I visit is, have visited is open house or where the buildings and grounds have been there. So, or for activities. That's all I've been in for the whole, anytime I have been on the board. That is the entire thing that I've been there for. Thank you. All right, let's move on. Staffing at the middle school. We've been told that the staffing at the middle school is all full at this point. I think that was put on there basically for a look at the fact that some is virtual and some is, you know, is subs, and just to know what the middle school is doing for those positions. So our fifth grade math science is a maternity leave. That teacher is projected to come back November twenty eighth. Our health position is a long-term medical leave, seventeen weeks. And our eighth grade math position has been posted since I became aware of the teacher leaving. And we had one applicant, which we interviewed. Chris Kibbe was part of the interview team. That applicant was subpar, and we continued to advertise. And in the eleventh hour, we had to, we had to pull in a virtual. We tried to use a high school, an intern from the high school. But that has since fallen apart as well. So all we were left with is, as an option, was the virtual teacher, which we are hiring on a month-to-month basis. The position continues to be posted on SchoolSpring indeed. And should a viable candidate apply, is interviewed, and meets the criteria and qualifications, we can terminate our contract with the virtual teacher and bring the non-virtual teacher on board. So we still have some open that you're looking at, is what you're telling us, and that you're actively looking for those.
For the eighth grade math, yes.
The person who is, the virtual teacher is, has a Vermont certification.
And has gone through the background check, fingerprinting for the state of Vermont, et cetera. They're Vermont qualified, just not here physically.
And the same thing with the special ed positions.
Correct, those two positions.
Two of our three special ed students, teachers are virtual. Is that correct?
We have two teachers here in the building, and then we have two and a half virtual.
Two and a half virtual.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions? No?
Did we have virtual, I'm sorry, I may go in on this, but still getting on board. Did we have virtual sped teachers here last year at the middle school?
No, but we, we were actually down one full special education teacher last year. So we had, we had four, but we started the year with five. And then halfway through the fall, one of them left, and we were not able to fill that position. So we went through the year with four.
Does that mean the remaining four had more of a caseload, let's say? Was the work shifted onto them from the one who had left?
Maybe the, and I'm...
I can speak to, I can speak to a little bit, because the, what had happened was that there had been a bubble that came through of students on IEPs. And so we had added, there was always traditionally four, a case manager per grade level. So we added an extra one that kind of followed that cohort through. And that cohort is now at the high school this year. But that said, the, there was a distribution of caseloads of our students on IEPs to the other case managers. But at the time, there was also, you had an additional case manager here that was a behavior case manager, that was handling two students at the time. So actually, the shifting of that other student, that other case manager who left, their caseload was distributed amongst all the, all the special educators here, not just the, that grade level special educator. But Sue was correct, is that... But Sue's correct is that mid-year, one of the teachers had a family crisis and had to resign based on a family crisis mid-year. Another case manager left to open their own preschool. So they left to do that. And two retired after 40 years plus of service. So, and one of the case managers had been assigned to Westminster last year and would return to the middle school this year. So, so the issue has been really the two who retired and trying to be able to fill those two positions is the challenge. Those positions have been advertised since last year.
Is there, I don't expect an answer, but this is what bothers me. I see a long-term trend ahead, where we're going to progressively depend more on virtual learning. I don't want to see a virtual school. I don't want to see a school where a child is in front of a screen six hours a day. I don't want to see that in 10 years, if I'm still alive. I don't think anybody in this room would, or anybody watching in their right mind would want it. But that's where we're headed. Unless we can shift the focus of where young people are looking for careers, looking for their passion. If it's not in education, if it's not in specialty education, we're in trouble. That's all.
We did also look with placement agencies even, to see about getting, I mean, there are educational placement agencies out there who look to place, you know, a myriad of teachers and/or positions. And we were unsuccessful in that area too.
Andy, I know you've tried.
No, no, I mean, but I think some of the feedback is, it was, it is that folks aren't getting into the profession, which is a huge issue, and we know it. And then it's trying to cultivate folks coming into the position, getting them into this area, right? So it's, you know, like, because I did it a few years back. We were looking at adding another school psychologist. And we had wonderful applicants that we would interview, and we were excited about it. And then the feedback would be like, yeah, there's just not enough of me to do in the area outside of school. And then we're like, how do you bolster that up, right? And really work with that. So that is some of the struggle we're dealing with. And then, I mean, very frankly, we, you know, it didn't help that our neighbors to the south had a really big increase in their collective bargaining agreement. And that, you know, that does siphon off unfortunately, so.
I can interject. One of the obstacles, so we had a higher education teacher, she's finding housing for that person. So they did manage to find housing in New Hampshire, but it's an obstacle. They had to go to another state to get housing, so that's a big part of it too. It's like, we get offered a job, she did take it, but it took a while.
I do remember you mentioning that earlier here, that you were actually interpersonal connections to find something, even just temporarily for that person.
I think, I think that this is a real challenge. I mean, I think most of us that are following school boards and school employment realize that there's this critical shortage of teachers, and of course, there's a critical shortage of special ed teachers. And I think that, to comment on Bill's comment about the virtual, I think, I think that this district has been slow to embrace virtual. I think the COVID was an emergency crisis type of situation, which of course is the worst way to implement virtual. But I think, I think the, to me, the challenge for us, and I think it's a challenge across the board, is we need to decide, as a district, those courses that lend themselves to virtual. And the, you know, when I look at our situation here, and I see eighth grade math being virtual, that hurts me. I think the, looking at the pool of educators that we employ, to say that that's the best we can do for that critical year of math, you know, is a concern. And I know people have tried. I know I have a child that went through school, went through public school as, on an IEP, disabled young man. And so I lived it. And if there's one area that I would not employ virtual, it would be there. And, but there's plenty of other areas. Maybe not, certainly not in the elementary schools, not even really so much in the middle school unless you're offering high-level courses or something. But certainly, the high school is a prime area for, you know, dealing with low census specialty classes. You're typically dealing with the kids in the most motivated, highest achievers and things like that. And so that, so that, what I'm saying that this district needs to do, and maybe everybody needs to do, is you've got to put your punch where it helps our kids the most. And I know that creates a bunch of other issues. We deal with unions, et cetera. But to me, this is not going to go away. This is not a one-year deal. And I don't think, I don't think we've been as proactive in this area. And maybe there's good reason for that. But by God, we ought to become proactive now and provide some leadership in this area and address some of these critical areas of teacher involvement that we've failed at, in my opinion, this year.
I think some of the challenges, and we've spoken about it at many different board meetings, and I'm not trying to get you all fired up here, Chris, is that, and I know Rocky Haven supported it, but we're not a district in general, like a supervisory district. We are a supervisory union. So I cannot just reassign a teacher from, say, the high school to the middle school, because they're employed. Because they're employed, no, I mean, like, I got solutions in my head. It's just there's these barriers of, you know, wouldn't it be great to just say to, you know, to move a high-quality math teacher down to come down and teach eighth grade math? Because, you know, that's where our kids are going to get the best, you know, out of it. And because the different districts, you know, employ the different people, it makes it challenging to move them that way.
No, no, there's all kinds of barriers. I'm just saying that the success is finding ways to deal with those barriers.
Yeah, actually.
So the, I mean, you could go on, I'm sure, with excuses, but.
No, it's not excuse. I mean, I actually just had a conversation with a young lady who's taking AP classes, very intelligent person, who was actually talking to me about how she's taken a couple online classes and how they've been extremely challenging for her. We're talking a highly motivated student. And it was interesting, because that was part of my conversation, like, why did she find that challenging? Because it's always been my experience, a highly motivated student accessing online classes, that's typically, as you'd said, that's always been my experience too. So to hear a student, I would say that would be a perfect one, talk about how that had been a challenge, and then how do you get around those barriers of the challenge? Because I do think there's opportunities there, especially at the high school level. I've seen it happen at the middle school level. My own son and some of his friends were able to access online math classes because of where their level of math was, so.
I also know that when you talk to college students, if you ask them which class they got more out of, the in-person one or the online one, and almost without exception, they'll tell you the in-person one. They got far more out of that, learned more in that class than the other one. So do they do okay in the online ones? And do they get their good grades in that one? And do they get their credits towards graduation? Yes, but they're not feeling like they get as much, so.
And I'm not saying that it's a superior method. I'm saying it's a tool in the toolbox. And when you've got limited resources, you've got to make the best use of the tools in the toolbox. And as I said, I think that, as I look at it, as I look at the middle school this year, I think the, I'm disappointed.
Yeah, and I think we're still working on it, so, from all standpoints. I think if any board member hears of anybody out there, or any community member hears of anyone out there that they know might be interested, that they should get in touch with the administration. And possibly, we can solve that and we'll do more in person. But at this point, you know, like you said, it's a tool in our toolbox. And I think administration is doing the best that they can to get through this and have a fully staffed school. So I do applaud them for at least, you know, their efforts in this area and feel that, you know, as they continue to work with it, maybe we can get it solved. Anybody else? Okay. I do have Rocky Haven's school board goals on there, but again, we're at well over an hour and a half, and we still have executive session, just comments in that. The one that I wanted to look at, I'm going to list it so that you guys can think about it and maybe come up with how we can measure it a little better. Goal one was continuously improve student achievement. And what the goal currently says is by endorsing and supporting the hiring of passionate educators that embrace the values of WNESU. This is what we just talked about. Second one is by supporting high-quality professional development for all Rocky Haven teachers and staff. And we are having professional development on Friday. By supporting and meeting the needs of students at all levels in all areas. That one's probably the hardest one to measure. The first two you can do with some anecdotal records. But if the board members have ways of being able to measure those a little better, it would be good to have some measurement in there.
So the goal is the one at the top?
Right, continuously improve student achievement.
Action steps, that's just pervage, okay?
Right.
So that, you don't measure those. You measure the one at the top, okay?
Right.
And like I said, I think, I think all of these different types of assessment tools that we have, academic, social, cultural, whatever, are the means by which we evaluate that goal. So I think, you know, I think that's a keeper. The goal number three, which is to ensure a safe and healthy environment for staff and students, that's a keeper. And I think the way we do that is we make sure we're proactive in terms of addressing building needs that are cost-effective and responsible. And I think the one on the budget, what does it say? Develop and propose budgets that achieve the greatest educational return for the dollar expended. There's nothing wrong with that statement as a goal. And you measure it by how do we do on the budget? So I don't think, I think it's pretty easy to come up with a succinct list that really focuses on what goal, what boards are supposed to do, and that are easy to manage. You know, I know there's capital projects that we've wanted to see done, and we're stuck in the approval from the state queue. And, you know, I'm sure Andy and Jim are doing everything they can to expedite that. It's political season, it's election time. You know, our reps and senators, I don't know if they can be of any help. I'm sure you've talked to them. I hope you do. But, so that's a way of improving the, basically, the safe and healthy environment. You know, we talked about the security system. And that's a, it's a great thing for our district to undertake. I keep calling it the district, but you know what I'm saying.
I go back and forth in my own head.
Well, it's the fact that we're tying in all of the buildings is critical, I think. Anyway, I don't think we need to spend a whole lot of time on goals. It's pretty subtle to me.
Okay. We also had, can look at, you know, Andy had suggested, I think, maybe tying them to what the recovery team did on their goals and making sure that we've addressed the goals.
I just think it might be useful, whatever goals you settle on, that we also look back at those SU goals and just draw the lines where they connect back. And they're going to connect back very easily. I don't think it's a lot of work to do that, so.
Yeah, I haven't seen the.
I can propose, I can make a proposal to you where I think they fall, and then.
That would be nice. I personally would like that.
Yeah, I haven't seen the SU goals, but I guess they're, the old goals are being reported on, and the new goals are being.
We worked on them a lot in the recovery team last summer.
Oh, okay, the recovery, okay.
We had meetings once a week, all summer long last summer.
That was before.
And they really do match up with a lot of the ones that we have here. So, yeah, if we could do that, and if you've got suggestions, if you can just, you know, maybe email me the suggestions. I can kind of make notes and have them ready for the next meeting so that you guys can look at them and make any decisions or any changes that you want to make. Chris also had another goal about reviewing the policies. And so, but I think we've been reviewing the policies, the WNESU Policy Committee, which I chair. We've been going through all of the required ones, and we're almost through the required ones by the state, because they had not been done in over five years at this point. And so, and one of the things is to do them every three to five years and review all of them. So we've been working on those. And then we'll get to the ones that aren't required next, or any others that board members, any board member wants, they can suggest. Any community member can also suggest something that might want to be a policy that we might want for our, for our boards, as well as our principals and our superintendent and anybody else. All right? So with looking at the time, let's go to director's comments. I'll start with you, Chris.
I don't have anything.
Oh, before you do, I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt you first, because I wanted to read the statement. Keep in mind that these comments are the individual thoughts of each individual board member and do not necessarily represent the board as a whole, because there was some question of that. So I'm just putting that in at the beginning. Now, I'm sorry, I apologize, Chris, go ahead.
No, I don't have any comments.
Did you say you're all set?
He's all set.
Okay. Jim?
I'm all set.
Okay. Bill?
And I'm all set.
I was just going to say thank you to our principals, administration, staff. The school opening was smooth and uneventful thanks to our talented and dedicated staff and administration. I urge you to celebrate the accomplishments of your children and support the staff and find a kind act to do each day. That's for all of our parents and community members. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session, or I can give the motion as well, so one of these. Or a personnel and. so I want to use, for a personnel and a student matter. Where premature public knowledge could place the individuals and/or the board at a disadvantage with the administration being invited to attend.
So moved.
And so, how do you vote, Chris? Jake?
Who's invited?
The administration.
Aye.
I say aye.
I'll make a motion to appoint David Chesley as a long-term sub for our health class here at the middle school.
We don't need to have, you know, what level, right?
Well, he would be the lowest.
Yeah, as long as it's within what.
So.
Okay.
He's got a bachelor's, bachelor's level four.
Okay.
Or step four.
And a BA.
BA.
Step four.
Yeah.
Okay. Chris, how do you vote?
Yay.
Jake's?
Yes.
Yes.
And I vote yes. So, that's been appointed. There was no other action coming out of executive session, so I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Jake says yay. And all in favor, just thumbs up.
Yep.
Thanks.